I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands on the nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Forbes. President.
Mr. Kreis.
President.
Mrs. DeAndrea.
Here.
Mr. Duquette.
Here.
Mrs. Glad.
Here.
Mr. Lambman.
Here.
Mr. Sampdor.
Mrs. Sampdor.
Here.
Mr. Sambik. A. Ford. Mr. Wood.
Thank you, Mr. Ford. Before I go on any further, I have to thank everybody that the board member received from Clark Elementary School, their nickname is the Clark Owls, and I want to thank them for the lovely poster of the Clark Owls, and all the boys that have received one. So, thank you, Clark Owls. We call it national education, by the way. So, thank you, Clark Owls. Okay. Recognition of visitors and guests. Is anyone in the audience wishing to speak? Raise your hand, and under what... And under what... Oh, is there anyone? Okay. Okay, under adoption agenda, is our motion on the floor? With an executive session, I'm going to ask the board first. You rather have one during the meeting or at the end of the meeting? If personnel matter. Contract.
End.
End up there. End up there, okay. Would the executive session at the end of the meeting? All who's in favor, if you can probably say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Record that as nine zero, motion carried. Eight zero, I'm sorry. Motion carried. Approval of the minutes in the regular meeting of October 20, 2016, is our motion on the floor.
Second.
Motion in the proper second, question on the motion. All who's in favor, if you can probably say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Record that as eight zero, motion carried. Approval of the acceptance records of the committee meetings in the work session, work session of November 17, 2016, is our motion on the floor.
Second.
Motion in the proper second, question on the motion. All who's in favor, if you can probably say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This meeting will be televised on Atlantic broadband channel 17, CUPV, on the following dates: Saturday, November 19, at 5 o'clock PM; Tuesday, November 22, at 7 o'clock PM; and Wednesday, November 29. Times will be announced. Check local listings for additional dates and times. Dates and times will be posted on the Laurel Highlands website at www.lhsv. Again, this meeting will be televised following dates on TV: Saturday, November 19, 5; Tuesday, November 22, 7; and Wednesday, November 29, at 7. Superintendents, report off the wall.
Thank you, Mr. Duquette. At this time, all students are here for student recognition. If you could please go to the back by the rear of the auditorium, and we will start lining you up for your presentation, you know, very shortly. District would like to thank Mr. Randy Cantrell. Mr. Cantrell donated 150 binders to the school district. This helps us with organization, helps us with school, with students. With students who do not have the ability to purchase those binders, so the district thanks Mr. Randy Cantrell for his donation. Thank you very much. It's time we would like to honor and pay tribute to two of our fall sports individuals. Our boys soccer team qualified for the WPIL playoffs. The boys won their first round match versus Greensburg Salem, so congratulations to them. Our girls soccer team qualified for the WPIL playoffs also. Emily Rom and Colt Buckley, both members of the Laurel Highlands Coed Cross Country Team, were named to the Laurel Highlands Fall Centennial Chevrolet Scholar-Athlete Award. Emily Rom, member of varsity coed cross team, sang the National Anthem at Highmark Stadium prior to the girls AAA Championship WPIL Soccer Match, so congratulations, Emily Rom there. Continuing. WPIL tennis participant in the individual WPIL Single Female Championships, helped Franklin Regional High School, was a freshman from Laurel Highlands, Taylor Smith. Congratulations to her. We would also like to congratulate the following coed cross country athletes who made the all-county team: Bailey Rom, Taylor Smith, and Colt Buckley. Congratulations to all the student athletes who exemplified, balancing their studies and athletic pursuits. Congratulations to those individuals. Some of the happenings around our district. First, at Clark Elementary School, recently Eric McElveney visited Clark Elementary School in 2011 during a combat patrol in Afghanistan. Eric McElveney stepped on an IDP resulting in the amputation of his right leg below the knee. Eric's experiences relate to and motivate people to get back on track, would enrich their finish lines. Eric is an endurance and athletic speaker. He was a dynamic, enthusiastic, enthusiastic and engaging speaker at Clark, and the students enjoyed his message, and we thank him for his service, and we thank him for coming to our schools to speak to our students. Also at Clark, fourth grade is teaching about habitats and different living environments, and set up a display on different animal habitats within the building, so congratulations to Clark Elementary School. Laurel Highlands Middle School. St. Vincent de Paul, thank the middle school for their kindness and generosity of donations for food for the St. Vincent de Paul Food Pantry. The art of being kind was a great help to feed others indeed. Thank you for answering the call to be on the hands and feet of Christ, and that is Dana Prochek, the food pantry coordinator, so congratulations to the middle school for giving back to the community that we are all part of, and those who are less fortunate. Hatfield Elementary School for the month of November. Hatfield Elementary staff and students welcome meteorologist Ron Smiley from KDKA on Thursday, November the 10th. Mr. Smiley presented a weather program to the students, and they were also able to see his mobile weather map. The students and staff collected $2,200 for the turkey fund to help families in need. With that donation, PNC Bank maxed that donation, and a check for $4,400 was given in behalf of Hatfield Elementary School. A special thank you to Mr. Dove for helping coordinate this activity, and thank you to PNC Bank and our students at Hatfield Elementary School for that food drive. Thank you very much. And on that note, so far, six turkeys and over 500 food items have been selected for our local food pantry. Thank you to Hatfield Elementary. Every year, or every, not every year, but whenever we have a year where we have tenure teachers, I make it a point to have, or request from the tenure teachers, to answer two questions for me, and I have Miss Pix sent out a survey, not a survey, but these two questions to every teacher. First question is, please describe why you became a teacher. And the second question that I had them answer is, please elaborate on the most enjoyable aspect of working for the Laurel Highlands School District. And this year, we have three, or this month, we have three teachers that are requiring tenure tonight. The first one is Jessica Codrick, and I'm going to read for you one of those questions from each of our tenure teachers. Question number two for Miss Codrick was, Doctor, that I found was most good. Please elaborate on the most enjoyable aspect of working for the Laurel Highlands School District. Quote, "My most enjoyable aspect of working for the Laurel Highlands School District is knowing that our school district truly puts our students, education, and well-being first. I feel we have an excellent administration, school board, and staff that work for our students. Since I have been hired, I've had the pleasure of working three of the four elementary schools, and at each school, our goal is the same: education for our students. I believe everyone works together to accomplish it, and I'm happy to be part of that team." Congratulations to Miss Codrick. Later on tonight, she will be honored with tenure. Is she here tonight? Is she here? If you are, please stand, please be recognized. Our next requiring tenure teacher is Miss Tara Pettis, and I also was moved by her second question when elaborating what the most enjoyable aspect of working for the Laurel Highlands School District is. Quote, "My most enjoyable aspect of working for the Laurel Highlands School District would be the enthusiasm of our faculty and staff, and the willingness of those to reach out and assist novice teachers. As a new teacher, I have found all members of the Laurel Highlands School District to be encouraging and helpful. These individuals have gone above and beyond to make sure that I am comfortable in my classroom and being the best educator I can be. This is a wonderful school district to work for, and I'm proud to call myself a Laurel Highlands Mustang." Miss Pettis, are you here tonight? In any case, I would like to welcome her to tenure, and I appreciate her comments also. Thank you. Lastly, our third teacher is Mr. Richard Colissar, and what moved me the most about him is his definition of, "Please describe why you became a teacher." For me, being a teacher isn't just about teaching the content. When students leave my classroom at the end of the school year, I want them to be not only better math students, but more confident, responsible, hardworking individuals that are prepared to face any challenge that comes their way. And that's what we're really all about in education. So, Mr. Colissar here this evening. Mr. Colissar, please stand and be recognized. Mr. Duquette, that is my report.
Thank you, Dr. Wall. Okay. Good party evening, my favorite party evening, student recognition.
Before we begin, I'd like to congratulate all the students that are receiving awards tonight, starting with the fourth graders from RW Clark Elementary: Zachary Trader, Aaron Snyder, and Jayden Clyner. Now moving on to Hatfield Elementary: Hunter Sova, and Haley Holton. Lastly, from George C. Marshall Elementary: Addison Seuss, Gray Knapp Kefer, Ryan Kefer, and lastly, Isabella Hudson. Okay, now we have Laurel Highlands Senior High School Student of the Month. Our first one is Emily Rom for AP Biology. Jonathan Lewis honors chemistry. Brandon Sutton, Intro to Finance. Dwayne Phelan, Accounting One. Coleman Hunt, Video Production/Technology Education. Sadie Teich, Digital Communications/Technology Education. And last, Avriyan Nieman, JRTC Third Year Cadet. Congratulations to everyone that received an award.
Give everyone a round of applause. Is anyone wishing, please may do so now. Knowledge and more to welcome stay for the remainder of our meeting. We'll talk for a couple of minutes, and then give it to the chair. Okay. It's done, my academic foundation, Mr. Kreis.
Laurel Highlands Academic Foundation Board and Directors met on November 11, the high school. Two new trustees, Mr. Mr. Conster and Mrs. Holt, were approved, welcomed, and attended their first meeting. Student representative Olivia Sue reported that the screenplay is into the woods, and will take place March 9, 10, and 11, 2017. The academic foundation members are planning their dinner dance fundraiser for that event. Two mini grants were approved, one for Drumser Elementary Schools and a family reunion night at RW Clark Elementary School. There will be books passed out to all first graders December 6. First grade students will receive their own book, courtesy of the foundation, so that they may start their own personal library. And finally, a reminder that for seniors, scholarship applications are online at the district website, and seniors are encouraged to begin this process so that all of these funds are awarded this year. Thank you, Mr. Kreis.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kreis. Strategic plan and board policy? Ms. DeAndrea?
Yes, if I may move down to board policy, I'd like to make a motion to approve an updated, revised grading policy, that is Exhibit A. Second.
Motion in the proper second, question on the motion. All who's in favor, if you can probably say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Record that as eight zero.
That concludes my report, Mr. Duquette.
Thank you, DeAndrea. Under Curriculum Committee, Chair Person, Mr. Langley.
Thank you, Mr. Duquette. Under C1A, pro-student teachers from University of Pittsburgh at Greensburg, Alexander Bui at the high school, subject to social studies, and working under supervising teacher Mr. Carlos Shusko. Working from January 4, 2017, to April 21, 2017; August 28, 2017, to December 15, 2017. I would like to put that in form of a motion at this time.
Second.
Motion in the proper second, question on the motion. All who's in favor, if you can probably say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Record that as eight zero, motion carried.
Under C2, this is informational. Parent-teacher conferences were held on Monday, November 14, 2016. In addition, there will be a makeup conference day on Wednesday, November 23, 2016. Exact numbers on conferences will be reported at the next board meeting. C3, informational. American Education Week is being celebrated the week of November 13, 19. This year's theme, Great Public Schools, The Basic Right And Our Responsibility, which will present all Americans with a wonderful opportunity to celebrate public education, honor individuals who are making a difference, and ensuring that every child receives a quality education. This will reflect these special disturbances each day of the week in all of our schools. And last, under C4I, staff participated in professional development in service on Tuesday, November the 8, 2016. Training included Science Matters Kits, tool and tools, CSI U, de-escalation data, and the new differential evaluation model. C5, informational. Annual, oh, I'm sorry, the fifth annual career awareness week was held in the Laurel Highlands School District. It was a great success, and the district would like to thank the community partners that supported this event. C6, also is informational. There was no school in the Laurel Highlands School District on Friday, November the 11, 2016, in order for students and staff to pay tribute and honor Veterans Day and those who have served our country well. Mr. Duquette, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Langley. Under building grounds, Mr. Ford.
I just have a minor, a little bit oddy adjournment, and I'm not Mr. Rom's reason why you're putting that, I have that recorded at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Ford. Okay, under Finance, Budget, and Taxation Committee, Treasurers and Budget Report. Just having to come out of here. Mr. Kreis, if you have any, if you need...
Sure. Thank you. Item F1, I move that we accept a treasure and budget report found in Exhibit B.
Motion on the floor?
Second.
And the second. All who's in favor, if you can probably say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Record that as eight zero, motion carried.
Item F2, I move that we pay for the payment of bills as found in Exhibit C.
Second.
Motion in the proper second, question on the motion. Roll call, please, Kim.
Mr. Kreis?
Yes.
Mrs. Ford?
Yes.
Mrs. Beal?
Yes.
Mrs. DeAndrea?
Yes.
Mrs. Glad?
Yes.
Mr. Lambman?
Yes.
Mrs. Santor?
Yes.
Mr. Sumpick?
Mr. Duquette?
Yes.
Seven eight.
Motion carried.
Item F3, there are no GOF deals at this time. Item F4 is an informational report, combining investments for the district found in Exhibit D.
Second.
It is just informational. Item F5 is also informational, contains a board, a summary report for finances under your Exhibit E. Next item is an action item, F6. I move that we accept the federal report as found in Exhibit F.
Second.
Motion in the proper second, question on the motion. Roll call, please, Kim.
Mr. Kreis?
Yes.
Mrs. Ford?
Yes.
Mr. Lambman?
Yes.
Mrs. Glad?
Yes.
Mrs. Santor?
Yes.
Mrs. DeAndrea?
Yes.
Mrs. Beal?
Yes.
Mr. Duquette?
Yes.
Eight eight.
Motion carried.
Item F7 is a student activity funds, athletic funds report found in your Exhibit C, and I move for adoption.
Second.
Motion in the proper second, question on the motion. All who's in favor, if you can probably say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Record that as eight zero, seven zero, eight zero, motion carried.
Mr. Duquette, that concludes our finance budget and taxation report received.
Thank you, Mr. Kreis. Food and Service Committee, Mr. Ford.
Don't guess one A, cafeteria, cafeteria report, Exhibit H. I've read my report, I'd like to put that in form of a motion, check itself.
Second.
Motion in the proper second, is there a question on the motion? All who's in favor, if you can probably say aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry. Roll call, please, Kim.
Mrs. Ford?
Yes.
Mr. Kreis?
Yes.
Mrs. DeAndrea?
Yes.
Mrs. Glad?
Yes.
Mr. Lambman?
Yes.
Mrs. Santor?
Yes.
Mrs. Beal?
Yes.
Mr. Duquette?
Yes.
Eight eight.
Motion carried. Then on that.
That concludes my report.
Thank you. Security Adaptation Committee, Mr. Ford. Human Resource Committee, Mr. Ford.
Personnel and Labor Relations, Professional Personnel, Key 1A, approve additional substitute teachers, Exhibit A. A is regular certified substitute. I could put that in a form of a motion.
Second.
Motion in the proper second, question on the motion. All who's in favor, if you can probably say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Record that as eight zero, motion carried.
B, Emergency Certified Substitute. I could put that in a form of a motion.
Second.
Motion in the proper second, question on the motion. All who's in favor, if you can probably say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Record that as eight zero, motion carried.
P2A, Request for Retirement Under Leaves and Resignation. A, Approved Request of Professional Employee A for a Good Cause Leave with Benefits from December 5 to December 19. Employee will have exhausted all indicated leave in FMLA permanently in need of additional time. Put that in form of a motion, please.
Second.
Motion in the proper second, is there a question on the motion? I just have one, does the date change on it?
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry.
That's okay, thank you. Okay. All who's in favor, if you can probably say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Record that as eight zero, motion carried. Record that as eight zero, motion carried.
P three, this is informational, Mrs. Cory Mahoney, a great teacher at Marshall Elementary School, will be returning to her position on the first day of the second semester. P four A, approve permission for the following individuals to be placed as a long-term substitute in the positions indicated. That would be Miss Pammy Kowalski at Hedges Elementary School. I'd like to put that in a form of a motion.
Second.
Motion in a proper second question on the motion. Roll call please, Kim.
Mrs. Bortles?
Yes.
Mrs. Santor?
Yes.
Mrs. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Lamben?
Yes.
Mr. Kreis?
Yes.
Mrs. DeAndrea?
Yes.
Mrs. Beal?
Yes.
Mr. Ducetti?
Yes.
Eight A.
Motion carried, eight zero.
I have a question on P five A, were these individually or were they all together? P five A, approved for teachers to have earned tenure to receive and be awarded a professional contract. Tara Hearts, Paige, Jessica Condrick, and Richard Colosar. I'd like to put that in a form of a motion.
Second.
Motion in a proper second, question on the motion. I'd just like to say congratulations and welcome to the Mustangs. You're tenured now, keep on doing the Bon Jovi. Thank you. All as in favor, can you probably say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Record that as eight zero, motion carried.
P six A, conference request, A is permission for Mr. Eric Gades and up to six others to be determined to attend to, to attend the E A title of the line, Proveed School Performance Conference, January twenty ninth to February the first of two thousand seventeen. At the Sheraton Station Square, Pittsburgh, E A. This will be paid by Title One Fund and totally contingent upon application of these monies. I'd like to put this in a form of a motion.
Second.
Motion in a proper second, is there a question on the motion? I just wanted to ask before they leave, we'll be getting another six people on the board, just so what Mr. is okay. Thank you. Hang on. Okay, all as in favor, can you probably say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Record that as eight zero, motion carried.
P seven A, permission for Deborah Laffer to complete a guidance counselor internship in the Laurel High School District between January ninth, two thousand seventeen, and April twenty fifth, two thousand seventeen. This will be in the middle school, this will be at middle and high school levels. That in form of a motion.
Second.
Motion in a proper second, question on the motion. All as in favor, can you probably say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Record that as eight zero, motion carried.
P eight A, permission for Stacy Rogers to complete one hundred hours of school nurse internship in the Laurel High School District between January ninth, two thousand seventeen, and April twenty fifth, two thousand seventeen. These hours will include thirty hours at the elementary level, thirty hours at the middle school level, thirty hours at the high school level, and ten in the special education. I'd like to put that in a form of a motion.
Second.
Motion in a proper second, question on the motion. All as in favor, can you probably say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Record that as eight zero, motion carried.
Support personnel, P nine A, approve additional substitute employees for support personnel exhibit J. That's the next one. The addendum. I'd like to put that in a form of a motion.
Second.
Motion in a proper second. All as in favor, can you probably say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Record that as eight zero, motion carried.
P ten A, care of professional, care of J. Put that in a form of a motion, please.
Second.
Motion in a proper second, question on the motion. All as in favor, can you probably say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Record that as eight zero, motion carried.
That concludes my report, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bortles. Athletic and extracurricular activities, Mr. Lamben?
Thank you, Mr. Ducetti. Under A and E, one A, approve permissions to award spring sports bits as exhibit L, elementary sports, varsity boys' track, varsity baseball, varsity girls' track, varsity softball, ninth grade baseball, middle school co-ed track, little school softball, and middle school baseball. And I'd like to put that in a form of a motion at this time as under exhibit L.
Motion in a proper second, is there a question on the motion? All as in favor, can you probably say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Record that as eight zero, motion carried.
Yes, I'm sorry, that concludes my report, Mr. Ducetti, at this time.
Thank you, Mr. President. Okay, under legal bar, Mr. Frank.
There are no grievances at the board level. The only report that I have is that the proposed bond issue for the advanced E T I is being evaluated, and in light of the most recent volatility in the market, it looks like that probably is going to be delayed until the first of the year. So we will keep you posted on that and the potential savings that are necessary to make that viable. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank.
Question?
Thank you, Frank. Okay, under general matters, permission to set the date and time for the annual reorganization meeting for Monday, December the fifth, two thousand sixteen, at the high school, the high school library, I'm sorry, immediately following, followed by a regular meeting. The work session will begin at five o'clock, but reorganization at six o'clock. Board pictures will follow. There are most looking forward to have that meeting on.
Next motion.
Second.
Motion in a proper second, is there a question on the motion? Again, that's in the library on December. All as in favor, can you probably say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Record that as eight zero, motion carried. Also, okay, now, career and full institute report, right?
Thank you. The, the C T I board meeting was conducted on October twenty fourth, and at that meeting a motion was approved to, for a section five oh one, chapter five, was presented in Fusion Policy Manual, and our solicitor, Mr. Peter Frankhaus, heard to write a motion to the president judge. This action enables our chief of security to have basically all the powers of a policeman to conduct business at the C T I. I believe that the structure is similar to, for example, the hospital police. Mr. Frankhaus?
That is accurate, and that is currently pending to be reviewed by the district attorney's office, and we anticipate that being approved next week on the president judge.
This prize gathering of administration staff and board members is held in a local restaurant to honor Buckman Jeffries in his retirement. It was certainly a surprise to him, but a fun gathering for all. As reported earlier, the grant was awarded to the C T I, and now the check has been received for a sixty-six thousand dollar grant in the benefit foundation for expansion of a national college preparatory program. A very successful U S based skills blood drive was held on September twenty eighth and twenty nine. Eighty-eight donors, we, they collected seventy-four units of blood from eighty-eight donors, and that will help some two hundred area residents. An open house was held on October eighteen. Store prizes were awarded and refreshments were enjoyed. Students conducted a demonstration of their skills in the various shops. And finally, negotiations are being conducted between the teachers administration and board members, and that, that is an in-progress.
I can report that that has been voted on by the professionals and approved.
Oh, good.
So it will be on the agenda Monday for the operating committee to consider.
Good news. So a successful negotiation for that teacher contract has occurred. That concludes my report, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Anyone else on the board that could have anything?
Absolutely.
All right, intermedia unit, Greg?
All right, thank you. The intermedia one board and directors met on October seventh, or twenty seventh, two thousand sixteen. Boardhead Craig Kamel is principal for Colonial Alternative School, in addition to his group of specialists responsibilities. The first early bargaining session with the teachers was held a couple weeks ago, and no finalization of offers had been reached at this point. The board considered the first reading of the knowledge, some policy is similar to the ones that the doctor provided the school district in the event of paraling overdose. And finally, the item one four also approved the purchase of environmental science, earth, and space science, ecology textbooks, as well as safety plans for all nine through twelve education campus schools. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you again. Okay, under other business, first of all, we'll start off with our then, of course, two items.
Thank you, Mr. Ducetti. I would like the board to consider motions for permission to open the high school library from two thirty to five thirty P M, Monday through Thursday for student use. Personnel posting will be in accordance with our collective bargaining agreement and position needs.
I'd like to make that motion. Second.
Motion in a proper second, is there a question on the motion? All as in favor, can you probably say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Record that as eight zero, motion carried. The library will be open.
This will be a great addition to our current services. Our library has resources in it that are virtually going untapped after school hours. This will provide our high school students with an opportunity to engage teachers, staff, and equipment, and literature, and research for their educational needs, something we should be very proud of. Thank you to every board member for that. I would like the board to consider a motion to approve the settlement agreement with Horan Inc. Incorporated for the purpose of settling all outstanding issues related to the H V A C contract executed for the high school renovation according to the details of the handout in exhibit.
Seven.
Second.
Motion in a proper second, is there a question on the motion? Take a roll call, I guess.
Mr. Kreis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bortles?
Yes.
Mrs. DeAndrea?
Yes.
Mr. Seppic?
I have to stay on that.
Mr. Lamben?
Yes.
Mrs. Beal?
Yes.
Mrs. Wagner?
Yes.
Mrs. Santor?
Yes.
Mr. Ducetti?
Yes.
Eight A's, one extension.
Carried.
I would like the board to approve a motion for permission to purchase and install panic buttons in all district buildings per, per wide horizon, quote, as follows. One thousand four hundred dollars per school and elementary buildings, and one thousand four hundred per school and middle school buildings, two thousand four hundred dollars for the high school and administration buildings. Each one, each building will receive two buttons.
Thank you, Matt. Second.
Motion in a proper second, and I think this is a great safety device for our students and faculty and all employees, so I'm glad we're getting that. Motion in a proper second, is there any other questions?
I also have a comment. I'd like to personally thank Mrs. Beal for all her time, and she was the one that brought it to our attention. I think it's a great thing, again, to give our students safe. Thank you.
Thank you. All as in favor, can you probably say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Record that as eight zero, motion carried. I'm sorry, nine zero, motion carried.
I would like the board to consider a motion for permission to suspend the high school wrestling program due to lack of student participation.
Make a motion. Second.
Motion in a proper second, question on the motion. All as in favor, can you probably say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Record that as eight zero, motion carried.
Mrs. Bortles?
Yes.
Mrs. Santor?
Yes.
Mr. Seppic?
I have to pass on that, because I was one of the teachers nineteen sixty-four that started the wrestling program, so it's hard for me to mark the handles. I'll pass it just as courtesy of the wrestlers.
Mr. Kreis?
Yes.
Mrs. Beal?
Yes.
Mr. Lamben?
Oh, yes, but I think that this is only this year, hopefully we'll have enough wrestlers coming up with the program, and we can pick it up in next year. So I don't want to go, yes, for this year.
Mrs. Wagner?
Yes.
Mrs. DeAndrea?
Yes.
Mr. Ducetti?
I was one of the original wrestlers on that, maybe fifty years ago. I gotta vote no, I'm sorry. I got, Mr. Seppic was my coach also.
Coach, so.
So I gotta say it's my coach.
For us.
Yeah. So I'm sorry, but maybe we'll get the numbers out soon. Motion carried.
Just as a sign of to the wrestling program, of course, we as a district hate to see any programs leave our district. Wrestling is also dear, dear to my heart. I was involved in the program for approximately fifteen years. My son wrestled. I know a lot of the kids that went through the program, and wrestling's a great sport. And as we develop an interest, as we develop the program, we will be, or attempting to bring it back. So, Mr. Seppic, Mr. Ducetti, I'll hand you out a single, bring you back.
There you go. I can't wait, no.
No, you can, I know I can. Mrs. Beal, who was that hook down?
That was seven A, one day, one pass.
I'm sorry, did you wish to change your pass, Mr. Seppic? You wish to change your pass or just leave it as that?
I'd just like to leave it as that.
Okay. All right.
Next, I would like the board to consider a motion for permission to name the basketball press box to John Kuzerek's press box.
Second.
Motion in a proper second. I'd just like to say Dr. Kuzerek is very deserving of this, and I know, and it's hard, and he's honored to have this award, because he worked countless hours, him and Mr. Jerry DuPey, back there, when they've been there seemed like forever. But they've always been there for our kids, and I respect them to the utmost. And again, I feel honored to be able to deserve it, Mr. Kuzerek. Anyone else have a comment? All as in favor, can you probably say yes?
Yes.
Opposed? Record that as nine zero, motion carried, and we'll have that hopefully by next football season on there.
All good, thank you, okay, we have a basketball this soon as possible.
Next, I would like the board to consider a motion to accept the resignation of Mr. Mark Santor, his audiovisual coordinator at the high school, and permission to post for replacement. We'd like to thank Mr. Santor for his service with the district.
I make the motion.
Second.
Motion in a proper second, question on the motion.
What's the effective date for that? I'm assuming immediately, on plan on posting tomorrow. Right now, we are working on Mr. McKee, knows the system, and Horizon will come out and train if we run into gaps, but right now, he'll be working with students, training them, until we can get someone else in there for him.
Here's a motion in a proper second, any other comments? All as in favor, can you probably say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Record that as nine zero, motion carried.
I'd like the board to consider a motion to accept the resignation of Mr. Craig Moon as volunteer boys' basketball coach, and replaced with Mr. Kenny Johnson per request of head coach, Mr. Rick Morgan. of head coach, Mr. Rick Margaret.
Make a motion.
Motion in a proper second, question on the motion. Is all in favor?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other questions? All in favor, see if you can probably say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, record that as nine zero, motion carried.
I'd like the board to consider a motion to approve the purchase of sixty-three PI AA mandated coaching techs at the discounted price of eighty-eight dollars and fifty cents. All Laurel High's coaches may then purchase these mandated texts from the district to become PI AA compliant. And we originally discussed sending on this for a little while, however, in order to get the discounted price, we will have to move at some point in the near future. I wanted to be prepared to save our coaches and the district as much money as we can. Um, I initially thought that maybe this program of coaches being, or having to take these classes may go by the wayside, but looking into the issue yesterday and today, this is here to stay. So the district will be made whole for all books purchases, purchased. Um, every coach will be required by mistake to take this course in order to remain a coach.
Retail.
The retail cost without the discounted price is approximately a hundred and fifty dollars.
Not to take this test, maybe you want to put a fee.
Yes, but they're gonna have to purchase a book from us so that we remain whole of them when we purchase. Our coaches just get a discount by buying books from us as opposed to going to retail and be about seventy dollars.
Okay, so it's a savings for them a hundred dollars.
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
Motion in a proper second, any more questions on it? Okay, roll call please again.
Mr. Kreis?
Yes.
Mr. Seppic?
Yes.
Mrs. Beal?
Yes.
Mr. Lammon?
Yes.
Mrs. Santor?
No.
Mrs. Bords?
Yes.
Mrs. DeAndrea?
Yes.
Mrs. Wadd?
Yeah.
Mr. Chiketti?
Yes.
Seven A's, one A, or eight A's, one A?
Motion carried, eight one.
Please.
Thank you very much, of laws. Uh, anybody under public comment, which one speaks now?
I can't see the button.
Oh, yeah.
I, I received some distressing news in the middle of our meeting that two of our high school students are, have been in a serious automobile accident. Um, if we could just have a moment of silence for those two students, um, be appreciated. I think their parents are very set off the process here, so if we just have a moment of silence, it'd be a good thing.
Uh, anything else under public comment? Okay, uh, before I adjourn this meeting, I'd like to wish everybody a happy, healthy Thanksgiving, coming in in an opportune time. I know this year and there is a wonderful moment to be, to have a Thanksgiving and I wish everybody a happy and pleasant Thanksgiving. To myself and your board.
Yes, sir.
Okay, is the motion on the floor?
Second.
Next, second. All in favor, see if you can probably say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, unless the contract, uh, matters. All in favor, the chairman, see if you can probably say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, record that as nine zero, motion carried. Thank you.